We have video recorded and broadcast over local access channel eight and through the town website at www dot eastham dash ma dot gov. Thank you. We have, I just want to make a note, we do have a quorum, so we can go forward with the meeting. There are no agenda changes. A public comments, are there any comments, anybody from the public would like to make a statement at this point? Or can wait till later if we're discussing something? No, no comments this time. Okay. Our priority business, our first piece is Susan Marias here, and she is the director of our food nutrition services. Welcome, Susan, and thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for having me. Love to tell you a little about what we're doing here at Nauset Public Schools. I have just some short photos, just to show you some of the things that we're doing because pitches are at the, you know, speak volumes. We have been doing a lot of training, so we started out this year on the December 5th with the, we have a chef locally in Truro that did some training with our staff twice during our half days in October, and then our full day in November. This is a picture of all the staff in Nauset at the new kitchen at the high school. They did, if you want to, we did an all-day training on scratch cooking and teaching them how to do sauces and different dressings. We're also learning how to make pickles from scratch because some of our sodium's going down. So this just kind of gives you an idea of the new kitchen and the staff and some of the photos of them working together. And then we have Colleen, who is our manager at the, at Eastham Elementary. We do have a new staff, Val, unfortunately did not have a picture of her because she was away for a while, but you'll start seeing some of her in the school as well. This gives you some idea of the kids going through the line. There's Val in the back serving. We've had a lot of local items. You'll see a lot of fresh fruits and vegetables. These are the lines. Chicken broccoli Alfredo, fresh beets. And then just one more that just shows you some local farmer items that we're doing. Here's Jackie, who's a nutrition intern that's been working with us, and this is farmer in the school doing some cranberries, teaching the kids how cranberries come and doing some relish. And you'll start seeing that relish that they learned how to do that on the school menu in the next couple of weeks. So it was just some photos, short, sweet, kind of gives you an idea of what we've been doing at the school. We've also have done a lot with Mary Ellen Reed, who's a local, is a district nurse with the Healthy Initiative Meals grant that she had. We are doing hydroponics in the schools, each one of them, each school has hydroponics. They are having, when you do, when we do those, they do about 25 pounds of lettuce every two weeks, I mean, every month, excuse me. So that's been great addition. We've had some local produce as well. We're trying to do a little bit more of it. We have Eastham turnips that we served on the menu twice in November. We also had some local with, in off Cape, but local butternut squash that we served for a harvest meal in November. We also teamed up with Churro Hillside Poultry, so every Thursday we've been doing some local chicken as well. So in this, and so we're really grateful that we're doing a lot of things for the kids coming up. We also have, we also, Eastham, Orleans and Wellfleet both got that Fresh Fruits and Vegetable Grant, which allows us to serve fresh food, to give us a grant, so kids get to chance, get the chance to try different kinds of fruits and vegetables during that, it's during their break time. We decided to do it in the morning when they have a break time. So for kids that don't necessarily have a snack, they'll get a chance to try different kinds of fruits and vegetables. Mostly stuff that, you know, you might not see in, you know, school lunch or maybe not even at home. In the last few weeks, we've done pomegranates, curabi. We're coming up in January, so they're going to have a multiple different kinds of oranges, blood oranges, a different kind of grapefruit. Today was grapefruit for the kids, so they get a chance to try some of those items. So it's just a wide variety of different kinds of fruits and vegetables that they might not get a chance to see that they might actually like. So that's been a lot that we've been doing. We also participated in the health fair that we had back in March. So we're doing a lot of great things in the schools in the past few months. Along with, we, this is the first time, I'm really grateful, first time in the last couple of weeks, we've been fully staffed district-wide since before COVID. And that includes Eastham Elementary, which we're very excited about. And then, as you know, that Governor Haley signed the bill last year, the year before, that we are now permanently free meals, breakfast and lunch, which I'm very excited about. I don't know if anybody has any questions about?
I'm gonna just, I'm just gonna tweak a couple of things here. So talk to us about the grant that you got and the fact that you were invited to a national conference.
Oh, yeah, yes, that with the Healthy Meals Initiative, Claudia Cope and Mary Ellen and I went to St. Louis last year with the USDA to actually team up and teach people what we've actually been doing here in Nauset, all the different fresh fruits and vegetables that are being served and the hydroponic system that's in every school. So that was very exciting to be able to show them what we've been doing here in Nauset.
So I think that that's really special, the fact that they were invited to attend. And she mentioned that this is a full, the first time, certainly my four years, is the first time you've had a full complement of staff across NPS. Normally, we see Sue driving between schools, trying to fill in here, there and everywhere. And again, I know Sue, I've said this to you before, but just thank you so much for your commitment and your dedication to NPS because you've just done an amazing job filling in wherever we've needed you. So shout out for that. The other thing too, I think that, you know, the, the Health and Wellness Fair that, that you did, that was the first time, right? That you've done that?
It's the first time.
Working with Mary Ellen Reed, and I think you had about 500 plus attendees.
It was a lot of fun.
Which was just incredible when you think about 500 plus people coming to that fair. So super, super well attended. And the hydroponics, I just want you to repeat because I think that's so important. How many pounds of lettuce are you harvesting?
Every, every 21 days with a full sort is 25 pounds of lettuce.
25 pounds of lettuce?
Yeah, 25 pounds.
So we, we are literally, literally harvesting lettuce in every building right now.
Yes.
That's going right into meals.
Yeah, it's going right into school lunch.
Right into our school lunches. And I think that you've got some, another hydroponics that you're testing or that you're going to test or whatever with something different. So I think one of the strengths, many strengths that Sue brings is her level of creativity and innovation to the role. And Sue, we're just so grateful for all that you do for our kids. So wonderful to have you here. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Sue, a quick question. I'm sorry, Sue, a quick question. I know that the meals for this in school are now free. Are we still able to supply meals during school vacations for families? We were at one time. Are we still doing that?
Yep, that was, that was only during COVID. We're back to school lunch and breakfast. You have to be enrolled in the school system in order to get the free breakfast and lunch.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sue? None. Sue, thank you very much for your time. Really appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
Those are really showing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
You too. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next is our administrative report. I don't really have a report. I just have a thank you. I'd like to thank the Friends of the Eastham Coalition Council on Aging who run the thrift shop. They donated a large box of goods for the kids for their Christmas sale. And even more than that, they donated a large box of hats and gloves. So should the kids forget them or drop them somewhere along the way, there'll be replacements for them. And I just, I said, great, thank you. That was greatly appreciated. Principal, Mr. Cosby.
Thank you, Chair. Let's see, I'll just give you some brief highlights on, you know, this past month. You have my report, and I just wanted to say that, you know, we're full on into, you know, one of the busiest weeks of the year. Lots of festivities. We had our holiday table, which is an annual event at Eastham Elementary School. Just wanted to give a big shout out to, you know, all the parent volunteers that, you know, helped facilitate that, guiding the kids to choose gifts and to wrap. So we really appreciate their efforts. It's a huge undertaking. And then on Friday, we had a fantastic grade four and five choral concert at the Council on Aging, and it was really standing room only. Lots of folks there, lots of smiles. Kids did a great job. So I love that community collaboration and a special thanks to Mrs. Poitras and the folks at the COA for facilitating that event. And then Thursday and Friday this week, or Thursday, we have our grade four and five holiday concert. More than welcome to attend. That's at 8:30 in the morning. And then Friday, we do our annual winter solstice kind of light parade. And that's on Friday. So finishing up a busy week and a busy month. It's been, it's been great. And one other thing, I just wanted to say, we were approved the other night from the Conservation Preservation Committee for another $50,000 grant to continue maintaining and improving the playground. So, thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Cosby? Okay.
Absolutely. It's my turn, you bet. So mine, mine is relatively short tonight, but just, I know that you can all read, so I'm not going to read through it. Just want to kind of give you a broad stroke overview on each of these. So the budget development for us, again, you know, we do a number of budgets out of our offices, not just the Eastham budget, but, but all of them. And I just want to give a shout out to, I know both Pete and Mary have been at all of our region, you know, our recent region budget and finance committee meetings, and thank you so much for that because I know you've got other things you can do with your time rather than sit there and listen to us go through line by line. But thank you so much for being there because I know that when you're sitting there, you really have such a better understanding of how it all comes together. So shout out to both of you. Thank you so much for doing that. The region is, of course, is the most complicated of the budgets, right? Because it's really got four budgets that kind of intertwine it. And I know I'm going to say a couple of things when we, when we get into the Eastham budget tonight, but you know, there are some things, still some moving parts for us. But the region has the middle school budget, the high school budget, the central office budget and the region only budget. So it's got the four completely distinctly different budgets that all tie into the region. The single municipalities like Eastham or Wellfleet or Brewster are a little bit, a little bit simpler in nature. That's just, that's just how they are. But they're all, they've all come together. This is the first time we've gone public in December with our budgets, but quite frankly, it's where we are and it's what we've done every year since I've been here. It's just that this is the first year we've said, okay, here's our first draft. But we always have our first drafts ready in the month of December. So that, you know, and I'll talk a little bit further when we come to, to Bill's portion here. But what you see tonight is just the first draft. That's all it is. It's not a number to run to the bank with or anything else, or the newspaper for that matter, because it's just your first draft. So lots and lots of work on that. So I want to give a shout out to Gio, her team and the principals and everybody else that comes together. And again, I'll chat about that in a few minutes. The, the high school project coming right along. Very few things left on the punch list now for phase one. You'll recall that there are basically three phases to this. Phase one was the biggest phase with the greatest amount of like demolition and building and such. Phase two is smaller, but it's still pretty substantial, you know, if you've been up there and you're taking a look at it. But it's right on time and we're expecting that it'll be finished sometime just before the end of this, this school year. Phase three is a little phase, and that's just kind of where they go back after the plantings or maybe moving of the dirt or the, you know, it's kind of like the last, last few things that have to be pulled together. Very big night this Thursday night because we've got a temporary certificate of occupancy for our auditorium. So big night Thursday night. We are so excited. We've got, I think, 138 alumni coming back to do the concert on Thursday night. So very, very excited to be opening it. It feels almost a little too, too early, but I know everybody, they'll, they'll be kind. They'll understand that it's not 100% finished, that now it's, it'll have its own punch list, you know what I mean, to, to work through and such. But the fact that we can all get in there, super exciting. So the project is going along very, very well. It continues to be a lot of activity every single day. Phase two, too, they're just really buttoning it up right now so that everybody can kind of be working indoors now as the weather starts to change. And the last thing, you know, it's, it never seems like to be enough to say cybersecurity is still alive and well. And we got hit with it, I guess about two weeks ago now. And it actually came from a well-known member in Orleans, from the municipal side of the house, and just didn't realize what it was. It was, as Ralph would say, Ralph at our IT, it was a smart virus. It was a very smart virus. And Arlen was the first one to kind of look at it and say, wow, that doesn't look exactly like that individual's address because we, we always get things from that email address. So she sent a note back to what she thought was the real email address. The, the email address between the fake one and the real one was only off by one letter. And the virus sent back from the real address, not the fake, saying, yeah, please go ahead and open this. And so when we realized what was happening, everybody, like our IT department is in our building right now. Everybody was running around unplugging things and everything else. It literally brought us to standstill for that afternoon. But our IT was fabulous. They worked closely with the Orleans IT in their town hall. And, and just because of the connections of this particular individual, it, it spread throughout the state very, very quickly. So it apparently had been lying dormant and then just kind of exploded. So just a good time for us to all remember to make sure that, you know, if you're running a business, you've got the right firewalls, et cetera. And if you're at home and you see something and you're kind of questioning it, best to just delete it. So, because they're alive and well. So this wasn't intended, by the way, specifically for the school district, but we've had a number of school districts on the Cape this, this year, this fall, that have been hit by this kind of thing. So yeah, lots of activities out there. So just double check when you go to open something. And that's it for me tonight.
Thank you, Brooke. Any further questions for Superintendent Clancy?
Nope, great. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we're on now to the start of FY '26, and we haven't even gotten to '25 yet, but we'll do '26 for us. Giovanna, this is yours and Mr. Cosby's to take over for us.
Actually, I think I'm going to do the tee up, if that's okay through the chair.
Certainly.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna tee it up. And, and just because this has been a pretty standard routine for us right across NPS or across Nauset Public Schools. So there's a couple of things that you, that you need to know about this. First of all, there are no, no offsets. So for our FinCom members, if you're used to seeing offsets, and you should be, you won't see them in this particular budget just yet because it's too soon. That'll probably start to come next, next month. And if you've been following our budget processes throughout the course of the years, and again, if you're on FinCom or Board of Selectmen, then you'll recall, for example, that we don't get a lot of numbers until late January and into February. So we put forward our best estimated guess, you know, looking at trends, looking at patterns that we've seen throughout the course of the last couple of years, and we put that number in basically as a placeholder, knowing full well that Chapter 70 isn't going to come through until the end of January. And we get a lot of the same numbers from the same people you, your towns get the same numbers from, right? Whether it's retirement numbers, the health insurance, all that kind of stuff. When your towns get it, that's when we get it too. So we don't get it in advance. We get it all at the same time. So those are the numbers that'll funnel through, you know, that we, we just simply don't have right now. When we take a look at creating our budgets, I think that our budgets right across NPS this year have been probably closer to the target that we're trying to hit than we have in the other, the other three years that I've been here, which has just been a blessing because, you know, we, we've had some really tough times coming out of COVID. It was not an easy time. So tonight, you're going to see this kind of a similar pattern, but not at the same level that we've had before. Just a reminder, if, you know, we've got out of district children, and many of our schools do, then you're looking at a percentage increase there of anywhere, anywhere from 10 to 17% increase for those, those tuition. So that's something that you need to kind of keep in the back of your mind, too. They, they don't sit at that 2 or 3%. The other thing to keep in mind, too, when we're talking about contracts, and we just finished up, we wrapped up a year of negotiations at the end of last year. Keep in mind that, you know, for, especially for teachers that are on the matrix, there's a cola, but then there's also a step and a lane, right? A possible lane. The step is just the experience until you get to that maximum level. And then if you've done anything in between that moves you a lane, which is basically, you know, you've got a master's degree, you've done a bunch of extra work with courses, then you, then you also go over. Not only do you go up, but you go over too. So those are things to think about, like if, so for example, if you're, which we didn't, but if your contract was negotiated at, let's say, 2.5%, which this one wasn't, but if it was, it's not going to be a 2.5% increase. It's always going to be more because you've got teachers in the middle of that matrix that are doing the steps and lanes, right? So you always have to keep that in the back of your mind. Those, so, and I think the other thing too is, you know, if there are extras, for example, extra positions, extra teachers that some, that, that a principal might want. This year, we've said, listen, just try to hold off a little bit on this right now. Let's just get our base budget out there. And then if, if, you know, your committees, for example, last year, I know many of you know this Brewster had decided at the last, kind of the last minute, last month anyway, that they wanted to add an extra teacher. It was a foreign language teacher, and they said, you know, we know this is what our budget is, but we feel strongly about this, and we're going to go to bat for it on town floor, and they did. And, and they got that extra teacher, right? So there's, there are no real extras in your Eastham budget tonight. So I just want to put that on, on the table as well. So Gio, I turned to you and say, if I missed anything, if I captured as much as we can capture. Captured it? Okay. So with that, then Bill, we'll turn it over to you. The other thing too, and Bill knows this, the way that he's going to kind of go through it tonight is there's, you don't need to go through every single line because some lines have been level funded or whatever. But it's those lines where you say, ah, you know what, I just want to speak to this line or that line or whatever. And then we can come back, and if there are additional questions, happy to take those questions. But we won't waste your time with some details tonight on things that really don't need to be spoken to. So with that, Bill, we turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, Brooke. Appreciate that. Yeah, and just to, you have the justification, so I'm not going to go into too much detail. You have those where you can kind of look more deeply about exactly what those lines are. So as Brooke said, I'm just going to go through the sections and reference, you know, moderate increases and decreases that's, that stand out. Let me just get some notes here. So if we look at section, the first section, 2005 through 2013, you're going to notice that the, the section is up 3.76%. Slight increase in salaries, you know, due to the new contract, slight increase in contracted services in line 2011. And then, as I said, just, you know, please reference the justifications to see why those increases there.
Bill, can I jump in there too?
Yes.
And sometimes too, when you see some increases, sometimes it's our hiring from the last year too. Like sometimes we can't hire somebody at the salary that the out person was making, and/or it might be a little higher, it might be a little lower. So keep in mind that this is just not contractual. Sometimes it's different. And that could be teachers, could be admin assistants, could be anything.
Thank you. So the next section is 2014 through 2112. You'll notice a slight increase in this section, barely 1%. And that's due to a teacher, as you know, Brooke was saying, a teacher retirement and a new one hired at a lower rate. Reduction in line 2111. The elementary curriculum director responsibilities have transferred to the assistant superintendent. And so that's no longer in our budget. And then line 2112, contracted services instructional, we are reconnecting with a reorganized Commer Choice organization, and they're going to provide, we had a relationship with them prior to COVID, and they provide mindfulness training for both the staff and the students, which really is something that's needful, you know, in our school. It's kind of that last R in ruler, you know, regulate and giving the kids as many tools as possible to help with that. So that, so that's why you see the increase in that particular line for next, for next year. Line, the section 2026 through 2036, 2026 increase represents our eye-ready math curriculum and reading assessments. And then line 2032 increase represents the purchase of 30 Chromebooks for our grade five students that are interested in having, because they use Chromebooks at the middle school and the high school, and would like to introduce that platform to our fifth graders.
And if I can speak too, I think there's one or two places in here where there's some, been some changes just for housekeeping, where you might see something missing in one line but added in another. And technology is one of those things. If you recall, five years ago, you didn't have technologies in your budgets at all. And so we've been gradually adding the technology because it's instructional, right? I mean, our kids need it. So, so that's an add that you'll see, but that's, that has been gradual.
And some of those lines also is that things were reclassified into other areas that made it more appropriate. Like, you know, maybe there's special ed software that's needed. So we've moved and shifted some things around, and I'd be happy at a later time to, to kind of clarify that.
But the point is, it's, it's in the right lines. It's in the lines that needs to be in now.
Yes. You know, line item section 2037 through 2044, you know, salary increases. That next section, 2045 to 2057, again, salary increases with the custodians. And then line item section 2064 through 2092. 2064 is special ed teachers decrease, and based on projected student needs in our building, we're reducing special ed teachers from three to, to two.
Where was that? What line is that again?
Into the 264 section.
2064.
Okay. And I'll just speak to that, too. It's certainly one of the things that we watch, again, right across NPS. I mean, we had to make some changes, for example, this year at the middle school because all of a sudden we got an influx of a certain type of learner, and we realized that we had to shift and pivot how we were delivering services. So we do, we do watch that to make sure because we have to be in compliance with the IEPs, right? So just putting that out there. So right now, what he's got here will meet the needs of his students.
Yes, absolutely. And it's just, it's based on student need in our building. Okay, so you'll see as we go through this a little bit more, some of the other costs that have increased. And the therapies, like occupational therapy and physical therapy, those, those have increased but based on student need. And so this line item section, the 2073 through 2105, are increases in our, our shared cost of the preschool tuition. Line 2090 is special ed tuition based on student need. 2095, again, is tuition to other districts, again, based on student need. And then 2101 is our tuition to the collaborative, again, based on, on student need.
And so those are our out-of-district placements. So basically, I think you went through that a little quickly, Bill. So, so 20, I started 2090 again, and just kind of walk through each, each one of those sections just quickly. But not as quick as the first time.
Okay. Let me just look.
Could you actually start with the preschool tuition? Because the note says funds the cost of the integrated preschool program based on Eastham's enrollment, based on the average of the prior, oh. Okay, so it's not the cost, it's based on the number of children.
It's based on the number.
So the number of children has gone, has gone up. So that's, okay.
Right, and that, to be honest with you, I mean, Giovanna can speak to how that's figured, right? It's a cost share based on our share of students that are in the program and the services that they require.
At the preschool.
At the preschool.
At the preschool. Keep in mind, too, that, but sorry, you probably already know this, a preschool is an integrated preschool program. So it's really based on special needs, children with special needs and their peers. And that, that's what makes up our, our integrated preschool program across NPS.
Yeah, and I do apologize. I'd be happy to dive deeper into some of these things. I just assumed that we were doing the kind of.
Yeah, do the broad stroke overview, and then we can go into details after.
Okay. But we'll go back to the, to, the, let's see, 2090 increase, tuition to non-public schools. Again, you know, out-of-district placements, tuition to other districts, you know, again, based on student need. And then down in 2101 is tuition to the collaborative, and again, based on student need.
Great, thank you.
So when we, you know, come to the end, I mean, the increase. So when we, you know, come to the end, I mean, the increase, you know, at yeah, I mean, the bottom line, there's an increase of three hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and ninety two dollars for an eight point five seven percent increase. Regular education portion of the budget is up three point six nine percent. And special education is up eighteen point two two percent. So that's kind of a broad stroke of it. Happy to answer any questions or any.
And I'll just go back to after through the chair. I mean, we still have some rural aid. If there is any circuit breaker that's applicable, that has to still be put in as offset. So there is still that component that will come next month to when you get your version number two, your draft number two of this.
Bill, a quick question on on the therapies, the physical therapy, the speech. Do we receive any compensation from insurances on those? We by meaning mean to tell them, it's not us personally, but do we receive compensation?
We do receive Medicaid receipts, but those receipts go directly to the town.
Okay.
They don't come to the school district. They go into the town's free cash.
So therefore it goes to the towns that even though it's in our budget, it doesn't come out of our, doesn't cover the cost of our budget at this point. It's just a separate funding.
Correct, it goes to the town directly.
Okay, thank you.
This is just a question, since this is my first time doing this. So um, thi- this is based, like if we're talking about the special education, this is based on the students that we have right now.
School, yes.
In the school. So from what I understand, what happened last year, if we, if if this budget gets agreed upon and then you have new students come into the school with, for example, special education needs, that's when it falls than when we go through the budget because.
Right, and that's, you know, we're going through the budget right now, it's in December. And so a child could come after the budget has been approved.
Right.
And we're still required to provide those services for that child. So you're right. So it's very hard to predict if something like that's going to happen. But these are the kids right now and these are their individual education plans and the services that they require. And so.
Right, and there's no.
Right, and that's, this is a.
No, there's no no buffer that's built in.
Right.
No. But that also speaks to, and and I know that we've had this conversation around this table before, the need for a special education stabilization account to be established. And I know that we've kind of been after that. We just haven't been, we haven't fiscally been in a position to do it. But our, I think all of our other communities, I think it's on the next Wellfleet ATM meeting. But I Orleans has it, um, what Brewster has it. And I know that the region is also looking at establishing one as well. So it's still something that we need to be, when when the fiscal opportunity arrives arises, I think you should be capitalizing on that.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just have one more.
Okay, sorry.
The difference between the tuition to non-public schools and the other districts is is non-public, like a private, when a child goes to a private.
Right, we have, we have specialized programs in the MPS.
Right.
So those are the, you know, there's some children that attend those programs. And then there are some students that actually to to receive the services appropriate to their IEP are are completely out of MPS.
Oh, so other districts is when they're in, they're not at Eastham, but they're still with MPS.
Yes.
They could be, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Bill, Giovanni, at this point? Any further discuss, any further explanation you'd like to give to us at this point? Bill, it was time to look at it and come back.
Yeah, I mean, this is the first time you've seen.
Right, it is.
I just wanted to let the committee know that the central office budget is still being vetted and and sits on that committee. So the numbers that we have here are estimates at this time. There's still other things that we have to look at. And once we have answers to some questions, then we'll come back and make adjustments in those line items.
Through the chair?
Thank you, yes.
And as both Pete and Mary would know, that this is referring to things such as that pre-K being inside of the region. And the question is, is that really the appropriate fiscal agent, right? And maybe it is and maybe it isn't, and we don't know. And is the fiscal agent really better off to be central office as opposed to where it's sitting right now? So I know that you've sat in on those discussions and so this is what she's referring to tonight.
So I think we've led the line for all set on this one for us to look at for this month. How about we go into this year's and see where we're at for this year, which is an important factor right now, too.
I'm going to give a condensed report this evening. There were too many line items to go over that have movement over a thousand dollars. So I'm just going to go to page eight of the report. The prime of balance was two hundred and fifty five thousand, one hundred and thirty seven dollars. We spent, our encumbered seventy thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, leaving a balance of a hundred and eighty four thousand, three hundred and seventy seven dollars. If you have a specific question on any of the line items, I can answer those questions for you.
You had a couple of line items you said were larger.
There were lots.
There there are a lot.
I think that that's why she's saying let's let's just go to the bottom line and say.
Also a reclassification that we need to make to rural school aid to approximately thirty eight thousand. So that'll move expenses out of the operating and into the rural aid. So that'll happen next month.
Thank you.
Through the chair? Through the chair?
Yes.
Thank you. And that's something else I just want to mention, and again, for everyone sitting in the room and and whoever's on online tonight. Keep in mind that we are so early in our budgeting process. Now, she's talking about rural aid for this current year. So and and we're already talking about it for next year. And the truth is, we don't even know what grants we're going to be getting until sometimes July or August. And something like rural aid, we might know in advance, but IDEA or any of our title monies, we won't know until much later. So those particular offsets are difficult until you're actually in the year. And that's exactly what she's talking about right now. We happen to know what that money is and so we can start to put it in as an offset for this current year budget. And that's just how we have to roll in education.
Thank you very much, Brooke. Anything further on the this year, this month, this year's budget or offsets go that, all right, once I find my. All right, now, next, next agenda item is approval of gifts and grants. And do you have a list of those gifts and grants that have been given to us?
I don't know if there is one this uh, this month, is there? I don't think that there is, or did I miss something?
Would you have, Brooke?
Okay, thank you.
I do have it, I just kind of.
You had a couple of Cape Cod five grants, you have those?
Three Cape Cod five.
Right.
There it is, right there, yes. Go.
And you've indicated what they were used for. You may have a motion to accept the gifts and grants.
I will make a motion to accept the gifts and grants from Cape Cod five.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thanks to Cape Cod five for their generosity. Greatly appreciate it for all the good it does. Uh, let's see, uh, now we've got probably committee report to be next. And I know I'm going to ask um, Devin to go first, because I know he's on a timed schedule, he's going to leave. So Devin, I'll let you go first for your summation, please.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me okay?
We can.
All right, wonderful. Because the two pieces that I can speak briefly to are the Cape Cod Collaborative and then the Transportation Subcommittee. The Collaborative does lots of different things, as you know. But they've also been going through hiring a new executive director, that's been confirmed. And Hope Haskin will be taking over, starting, I believe, in this upcoming month of January, working with the current executive director. So to sort of have an easy transition, everybody's really excited to have her. One piece there is that there is another district of Plymouth that's likely going to be joining formally in April of twenty twenty five. So there'll be more folks as part of the collaborative, more kids will serve. The other thing that they're connected with, obviously, in serving and sort of running the transportation piece, connects to the Transportation Subcommittee, is this ongoing discussion about what NOSIT specifically needs to do. But in the meetings that I have with the collaborative, they kind of get a chance, I get a chance to sort of get a sneak peek of the regions, I mean, the region, Cape blind region, transportation challenges. The one thing I wanted to emphasize was we're doing great in NOSIT. And that seems to be the exception to the rule. Great, meaning we have drivers that are staffed and in some cases might have actually the same backup plans. Should those those staff not be able to tell in a moment? And yet, uh, great, it's a relative definition. There's definitely still shortages and still running kind of on um, the best case scenario would be to have more drivers and we're not currently in that best case, but it's working. Cost of buses, NOSIT's going to be needing to be purchasing and some short time, short time is debatable, like any car. I feel like I'm talking about my twenty fifteen Subaru or my two thousand three Tacoma. We need new buses, probably two to three new buses. Those will be likely seventy one seat buses, this the sort of biggest ones of the standard size. And I say that for the NOSIT as the NOSIT public schools and not speaking specifically for Eastham Elementary. One of the things that's come up in that discussion was would you replace these buses with? There'd been a big investment in propane buses in the last five to seven years. But now there's this potential for either replacing with that same fuel type, potentially going to diesel, potentially going to gasoline or potentially going to electric. And the thing I just mentioned about the decision is in the last meeting that we had just last week, a a group mass clean energy center, it's a nonprofit, has stepped in and we're now in a, we received a presentation about what kinds of services they have. Those services they provide are really financial planning, looking at sort of your roots and determining what kinds of things you could get away with or need or electric buses. So I I am hopeful, actually, in the next probably two meetings, the January and February meeting, that I'll have a definitive response to whether the electric school bus thing is something they're going to pursue or not. Because I think what the Transportation Subcommittee learned pretty quickly was there's a lot to go in electric. It's not just about purchasing the buses, there's obviously all the infrastructure that goes with it. And there's a lot of potential funding programs in the short term with grants, as well as just financial considerations and making those investments in your infrastructure over the next five, ten, twenty years. So work in progress there, but lots of good stuff. Happy to take questions if you have enough.
Any questions for Devin? No, Devin, thank you very much, appreciate. Okay, let's see, um, school, those, the school, um, school, schools, school council, please, yeah.
Right, our next meeting is January sixteenth. The School Improvement Council.
Okay, have we?
Had one in November.
Right, you had one in.
I spoke about.
And right, and so you're you're update, process of updating the.
School Improvement Plan, we're working on that, yep. And then, um, so January sixteenth, our next meeting, Thursday.
So you'll be presenting that once it's updated, correct?
Yes, of course.
All right, thank you. And let's see, uh, parents group?
I went to the parents group meeting. We're working on some, they're working on some fun events for the rest of the year. I also, I also made an announcement that we will sadly be having an open position. So I.
That's okay.
I planted the seed at that, if there was any parents there to talk about that will need another person on the school committee.
Very good, thank you for doing that, that's appreciated to have to start that early for sure.
Yes.
And um, Deborah, you had mental health ends.
Well, again, they meet during the time that I have work obligations. They, I think it's three thirty on Thursday, yeah, and it's, so I I.
I understand, no, you can't. I will ask Brooke if you can maybe, could I, I don't know if that's Mary Ellen who had said would be possible to start that meeting a little bit later so that our representative can get to it. Thank you.
Thank you, I will reach out to Mary Ellen.
Thank you. I have policy, we did not meet this month, we'll be meeting January sixth, I believe, is the first Monday in January again. And as Giovanni mentioned, the central office budget, we've had our first meeting. It seems like yesterday, but I think it was like last month, actually. And we're meeting again tomorrow morning. It should look at, so we'll be looking at it for our second look at the, and that's for the twenty five, twenty six budget piece. And let's see, I think I've, and communications, Sarah, you said also.
Yes, so I attended the first communications meeting that was open to the elementary schools. So they have met, uh, was it twice before that? Just as the region. And it's talking about how to um, just increase communication to the to the communities of the school, how to get out into the larger community, all of the wonderful things that are happening at the school. And they decided to include, since it's involves all of the schools, they decided to include the elementary school committees. So I will be attending those on a monthly.
Thank you.
I think we have meetings going through March. One of the things that was discussed is getting a type of communications director that um, possibly like a part-time position. So that was timely, given the discussions of the budget as well. But so we were supposed to go, come back to our meetings and mention that um, that that that's a possibility.
And that will be at the central office budget, I'm sure, right, Giovanni? We'll be seeing that tomorrow, probably, yes. Thank you very much, appreciate your efforts, yes, Brooke.
And through the chair too, just if you haven't seen it, um, we do have a video, a thank you video on our front page. If you haven't seen it, please go on and take a look. And we did it with the new building and it gives you kind of a a broad stroke overview of the work that's been done in the new building. And just to hear the children say thank you to our communities for doing this is just really special. So if you get a chance to watch it, it's, I don't know, maybe eight or 10 minutes or something like that. So it's posted right on the front page, there's a top banner and it says, I think it says, thank you video.
It does, says Nelson High School, Nelson.
Is it Nelson High School says, yeah.
So it does, I I happened to poke onto, because I was curious as to what it was about.
What it was about, yeah. They did a great job with it.
So I think that, I think I've now covered all the subcommittees there. They seem to be growing up, spreading up and up even further.
Did you want me to talk about the superintendent?
Yeah.
That's right, I'm sorry. Search committee, one night it rang in.
Yeah, so we, the deadline to submit applications for the new superintendent was yesterday. So we are, um, the superintendent search committee, which has now expanded to include two students, two parents, two teachers and two principal administrators and also the assistant superintendent. So now we're calling this the expanded search committee. So we are meeting tomorrow night to review those resumes and to pick semifinalists and to agree on the interview questions.
Very good.
So we are still on our timeline to get this all done before February break.
So you're working really hard on it. I understand, I haven't been in that one, we got Brooke, that's a lot of work. And you see, your folks are doing a lot very quickly.
And so there will be, um, forgive me, I can't remember if there's going to be one or two meetings that the joint school committee will be having to approve the, certainly the finalists. Now I'm forgetting, I think we meet for the semifinalists or something.
Okay, that's okay, it'll come, it'll come our way when it's the time, thank you very much. For future agenda items, I think at some point, and hopefully the next time, we get to look at the student handbooks.
I know that they are working on the student handbooks right now. So I I think that they've, and I think what we've done is we've, now Bill, jump in if I'm saying anything wrong here. But at one point in time, I think they had somebody before my time come in and take a look at all the elementary handbooks and and some changes were made, et cetera. And I'm going to tie it into something completely different because that hasn't come up tonight, but there is a tie in. The same kind of thing with our, um, with our crisis handbooks, right? And and it's like, if we're NPS, we should really have pretty similar templates, whether it's the crisis handbook or whether it's the regular handbook. And so, um, you know, one of the things that our police chiefs asked us this year is, you know, we we've done so much work in the last three years, but we've still got this one piece over here. And they said, can we please focus on this, you know, before I leave? And so we have put a focus on that. So Kristin Anderson, our assistant superintendent, is working on both, the regular handbook and the the crisis handbook, so that there's similar language across both, except for the changes that need to be made in the the individual books. So there's actually quite a bit of work that's ongoing right now with both of those.
My only concern is, as we, as the. My only concern is, as we, as the committees found out, just like a couple of years ago, we need to approve these handbooks to say, yes, they're acceptable to the, to the school committees as an overview of what's being said. And now we have not even seen this year's yet, so.
Uh, what you said is exactly what has transpired, you know, it's, it's more, you know, changing them, so it reflects the staff at Eastham, you know, Eastham's. But other than that, the policies across the district are very, are the same. And so that's what these handbooks are looking like. And, and honestly, I, I would think we could provide that. You know, you asked me about the School Improvement Council, I did give them a little bit of homework, so they, they did go and take the handbook and kind of go through.
Okay.
Make sure the page is in the right place, you know, any kind of revisions and things like that. But the content is, is complete. Um, and I think, you know, because Kristen had sent an addendum, you know, to me, and, you know, so I put that in there. So they should be ready, you know, in the next uh month or so. I mean, I'm sure what the timeline is on that end, but, or.
Well, and I think, too, uh, uh, we have talked about this for the, my four years here, because quite frankly, what, there wasn't a handbook even for the middle high school, right? I mean, there had been some emphasis put on the elementary, but not on the middle high school. Again, we need it across NPS. And those, to Bill's point, those should also be reflective of current policies.
Right.
Knowing full well that we are gonna have to change everything in about, I don't know, four months' time, you know? Hopefully, yeah, hopefully. So I mean, as soon as those policy changes come from, you know, through the subcommittee to the joint committee, and that's finally accepted, then those need to be changed. What they need to, ultimately, where they need to land, but, and I think we're getting there, and I think it's, I, I want to make sure that people are given the due for the work that they're putting into this, because ideally, ultimately, what you want is to be bringing your, like, one pager of changes at, like, almost every April or May to your school committee. And to your point, because legally, they should be, your school committees should be accepting these. And so Anne's absolutely right, and that's in policy. So it's law, but it's policy, it's policy. So, you know, I, I think we're getting there, but it's, it's taken us a while to get there.
I have concerns, and I'm not saying of our school, but we do have a situation at one of the, at the secondary level where the parents are saying their policy that they have in their handbook is not reflected from the policies written in our manual. And that's, we're addressing that at our next.
Oh, that's a good point. I mean, but that how, policy manual is on the website, you know what I mean? People at this point wanted to, you know, see exactly what should be in the handbooks, it's there, right?
But um, this is kind of a, this is a major issue, one of the secondary schools. It's not elementary at all, it's all secondary, just being the chair of the policy committee, I've heard it from both, through both years for several months now. And that's one of the issues we're addressing at our next meeting. That's why Brooke is coming, because it's a, it's definitely an administrative issue that we can't policy can do so much with. But thank you, Bill, yes.
So I, I guess I would defer to Brooke then as the timeline on, you know, actually presenting to.
I would, I would, and I would have to defer to Kristen, I'm not sure how far along she is, but I know that she's been working diligently on both of.
As soon as it's completed, we'd appreciate being, we'll do it that way, that's fine. Are there any other items that people would like to see on the agenda? Well, they're welcome to raise issues or, no, okay, at this point. Um, the next item is approve the minutes. I have a correction on the minute, I have a question on the minutes. In the minutes, when we're talking about the mass conference, in your, the minutes under your name, Sarah, it's, makes reference to the fact that you attended the, the conference charting the course. And it said, you're pleased to know that Eastern Murray has established a special ed stabilization fund. We do not have one.
Right, I did not say.
You did not say, okay.
Yes, I have a comment to the minutes. So I attended the mass conference and I took part in the seminar called Special Education Financial Issues, Impact and Management. So that was the morning, what do they call them, panel sessions?
Right.
So it should say, took part in the seminar, special education, financial issues.
Delete the sentence about the.
Charting, yeah, so it should not be charting the course. And then it did discuss um managing the cost of the special education fund, which I said, they spoke about having a special ed stabilization fund.
Right, ECM has not.
ECM does not have one.
Right.
I thought it was interesting, they spoke about one, and that you could, one of the ideas the speaker had was that you could initially fund it by any um, you know, extra monies you had left over at the end of the year.
Right.
But yes, I acknowledge that we do not have a special education.
But in those minutes, in those minutes, it should also be that you did attend the charting the course seminar.
And then in the afternoon, I attended, that new member school committee training is called charting the course.
Right.
And that's what I attended in the afternoon.
Thank you. So may I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Make a motion to.
Okay, by Deborah, second?
I'll second it.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Devin. Unanimous. And I'll ask, before we head to our last adjournment, I'd just wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, wishes for a very peaceful twenty twenty five for all of us. And on that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.